Daylight. How nice.
Meetings during the day.
Bring on spring.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, we have received regrets from Council Porter, but we understand that Council Parks is trying to connect in right now. It is six o'clock. I'll give it a minute or so for Council Parks, but then I'll call it to order and she can join in as we progress. All right, ladies and gentlemen, I think we'll get going now. I'm sure that Council Parks will join us very shortly. At this time, I would like to welcome you to the community, the whole budget meeting for this March the 15th. There was no closed session today, so we'll call the meeting to order at 6:02. I'll remind everyone that this is a virtual meeting. But all of the rules of procedures and code of conduct for council and the public apply. And if, if there is any drop in technical situation or inability for a member to connect, I will suspend the meeting for a short period to allow that member to reconnect. And assuming we have quorum, I will continue on, assuming they will in the future. With that, we are called to order. First up is an adoption of the agenda for this committee of the whole. Do I have, is there anything to add to the agenda this evening? Seeing none, can I get a motion to adopt the agenda, please? Take the deputy and Council Buterick. Any comments? And I'll call the question. All those in favor, please raise a hand. Any opposed? Cue, motion is carried. Is there any disclosure of pecuniary interest in the general nature thereof? Seeing none. And we'll move forward to delegations and presentations. I believe we have for item 4.1. Mr. Pierceall, Pierceall. Believe is in the audience.
I've just moved him over your worship.
Thank you, Mr. Pierceall. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Excellent. Well, welcome to the, to the meeting. And I would ask that you go ahead with your presentation.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor and members of council, first of all, I want to thank you very much for taking the time to allow me to speak. It's going to be very brief regarding the petition that's been circulating for the last month. As you're all aware, the past year has been extremely difficult time for everyone. People have been put on a higher sense of awareness and forced into situations out of their comfort level. Everything from masks to lockdowns, job loss and financial burdens. It's been a year of change and challenges. When the information came forward that our property taxes in Lollis Township would increase by approximately 4%, it sent people into a new level of stress. When I started the petition, it was my goal just to gather a few signatures to show you that there's a concern in the community. As I speak to you right now, the petition has gathered approximately 2,182 signatures and it's climbing each day. It has been shared over a thousand times, featured in multiple forms of media. To say there's a small concern is an understatement. People are at a level of panic right now. Our cost of living is increasing and out of our control. Everything from groceries to gas, utilities and general amenities, they've all increased, yet the majority of our wages don't reflect this change. For a large percentage of people, job losses occurred. And to this date, they have still not recovered. Those who had to collect served in 2020 are now in a payback period. And new taxes on the money they'd collected last year are due for payment. I'm confident that I don't have to quote numbers or statistics to any of you. You've all worked tirelessly reviewing data from your time in council and understand that Lollis Township is already one of the highest taxed areas in our province. That existing trend does not have to continue. You all have the power and the opportunity to do what's right for the community. We do get it. We understand that there is a, a need to keep the township afloat. It's extremely important, but it should not be at the cost of the people who live here. It's very difficult to save, purchase, maintain a home, yet it's still the goal of almost every adult out there to do this. Most people are within a hundred, maybe $200 breaking point each and every month. They live in a fear that something major is going to fail. And they're sent scrambling to find resources to pay their, sorry, to repair their problems. Creeping at the cost of the property taxes could be the difference if someone feeds their family a few days a month or not. Myself and the 2,182 plus people in Lollis Township have spoken. We urge you to seek other options to increase revenue that do not negatively affect those who make our community as great as it is. Mr. Mayor, members of council, I speak on behalf of this growing percentage of Lollis Township residents. And I present the petition to you for your consideration. I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Pierceall. And council, do we have any questions for the delegation at this time? Seeing none, I look for a motion to receive the petition and the presentation. And I'll go to the deputy for the motion seconded by Council Parks. Thank you. And deputy, any comment?
Thank you. Just very briefly, just thank you, Mr. Pierceall for doing the, taking the initiative to get this going and for bringing it to council so that we can review it.
Thank you very much.
Council Parks, any comments? Anyone else have comment? Seeing none. I will, I will call the question. All those in favor, please raise a hand. Any opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you very much, Mr. Pierceall. We appreciate you bringing this forward to us.
Thank you very much.
Take care. And with that, we will move on to item 4.2 for the agenda, which is the, from business services. Our, but adopted, or our budget presentation. And at this time, I'll call the deputy treasurer, Mr. Renier. Please go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Your Honor. I am going to share my screen here for the presentation. One second. It's good for everybody. Thank you. It's good. Okay, yeah, so as, as we were instructed at the last regular council in March, was to come back and create this committee of the whole meeting for tonight to have some further deliberations and to once again, just discuss the feedback we've received. So tonight, I'm first just going to start with a feedback update on the feedback we have received. So this is going to kind of be a bit of a rehash of what was presented at the March 8th council. So based on, we received about 350 responses based on the online budget feedback form. And these were the slides that were presented. This is just a high level summary of the common themes that were presented. As Mr. Pierceall also just mentioned there with petition that the sentiment that Lollis already has one of the highest rates, 4% with the pandemics too high. Most people cost of living increases much less than 4%. The residents on fixed incomes are being squeezed and a common theme is the combination of the taxes with the water and sewer rates as well. Further feedback received that was presented on March 8th was the paying of bag tags for waste collection was brought up a number of times. On the services that have been reduced or lost during the pandemic, namely recreation. That the rate increase proposed here is much higher than the surrounding municipalities. And the, the, the notion that the township has a moral obligation to keep the increase to a minimum. And then the thought that high taxes prevent people from moving here and drives existing residents out of Lollis Township. So that was just a high level summary again of the feedback. And as I said, since March 1st, we have received additional feedback. So we received about 14 additional responses through the online feedback form. Out of those 14 additional received, 13 were very dissatisfied. One was very satisfied. And it was very similar themes to the prior feedback that was received. And there, there were a couple more that did focus on the issue of rural services and what rural residents get. In addition to those responses, council did receive an email correspondence that was sent to all of council. And that email really focused on the idea that we should be focusing on Lollis, the Lollis rate increase, not the overall rate increase. And a big part of that email also spoke to the potential of incurring new debt in the township. So just to remind everybody, in the proposed capital general rate budget, there is the proposed possibility of 6.2 million in additional debt. Two and a half of that is related to the hub, which does require a further council report. But that, that was a, a big theme of the email correspondence. And I just want to say that the, that these additional responses, as well as the email will be, and the petition as presented tonight, will be included in the final report that does come to regular council. I'm expecting that to be on March 22nd. So these slides are, these, these are the actual response, the additional responses we received. I'm not going to read them here tonight, but they will be brought as per the council report on the 22nd. And this was the email that all of council, council received. Just to further go on the feedback we have received. At the March 8th council, there were a number of residents and members of the public that did come on council and speak publicly or ask specific questions. So these next couple of slides are just going to be kind of the, the township's response to the, the points and the questions that were brought up on March 8th. So the first one was where the revenue from commercial industrial taxes are to offset. The red is the township response to that. So out of the proposed 18.7 million in the general rate levy, about 2.7 million of that does come from commercial industrial tax assessment. And if you go to page three of the binder and tab one, there is the updated assessment table if someone is looking for that details. The next question that was brought up was the municipality just bought three historical buildings in Bath. What cost money for maintenance? Why is taxpayers' money being used? The township acquired the three bill historical properties as part of the legal settlement. And as per our asset management policy, the township is responsible for their maintenance. So that's why their maintenance would be included within the budget. And there was also the resident brought up concerns with the increased OPP budget. Just want to emphasize that the OPP budget for 2021 is up 1.2%, about 30,000. And that represents a total of just over $2.5 million in 2021. And let's go here. Got a leg here. Some of the other things brought up were the, again, commercial industrial area, not many businesses around here. Keep building new houses. What are we doing about businesses? How do we suggest new ways to try to attract these folks? And our response would be that the commercial industrial activity is identified as one of the five key components of the council adopted strategic plan for 2019 to 2023. And that does include key objectives such as increasing commercial and industrial property assessment, increasing local commercial services and streamlining the application process to assist in this type of development. One of the other points brought forward at the public meeting was looking for status on the marijuana farm that was supposed to come into the township. And if so, what are the taxation benefits? Township is becoming unaffordable. And we would respond that a land purchase option by potential businesses in place. Potential taxation benefits at this time aren't able to be determined. And I believe this is the last slide from that, but residence, residential taxes are not viable for sustainability. The 4% tax rate increase for seniors should be taken into consideration as their monthly income is not being raised. And I would respond with to assist seniors per by law. 2011 dash 2022, 22, there is a senior citizens property tax credit available for those that qualify. And I would urge any resident to either visit the township website for further details or contact the municipal office and get information on that if they're not familiar with that program. And then the last point was with the tax increase proposed and additional residential houses in Odessa. Is there any thought to the kids coming to the area? There are no play structures, splash beds, ice rinks not filled early in the season. So there are going to be things coming for the kids. And we can, we can share that current existing agreement with a developer in Odessa. A new playground structure and associated park improvements are expected to be constructed by summer 2021 in Elwood Docking Park, which I believe is near the fire hall in Odessa. And as, on the issue of the splash bed, it was identified in the recreation master plan and is tentatively included in the preliminary design of the hub project. So we just want to take the time to directly respond to the comments that were presented at March 8th regular council. But just say, if I'm going too fast at any point or anyone has questions, feel free to interrupt me. With the feedback, so we're going to get into the further deliberations on the 2021 budget. And just to start that, I'm going to pass it over to Mr. Steven Silver, our chief administrative officer. And he's just going to go over some of the challenges and pressures that the township does face. Or do you, Mr. Silver?
Unfortunately, Mr. Silver, you're on mute.
Thank you. There we go. Thanks, Mr. Renier. Unfortunately, so we have some challenges and pressures. And so this is a bit of a review for council, but we do have the public watching as well tonight. So I thought I would go over this again. So in 2020, the phase and assessment was postponed to COVID and the assessors being out to getting around to all the different properties. And that would normally bring an additional assessment. That did not occur, so we do not have that additional revenue in 2021. There are non-discretionary pressures as well, such as insurance, hydro, utilities. And that goes as far as the price of oil when we're paving and resurfacing. So we're finding contracts are coming in higher as well. Our asset management, the gap in meeting the annual requirements of all infrastructure to save for the future. We still have a gap and we aren't closing that very quickly. And we have a lot of aging infrastructure. We're fortunate and loyalists that we're a fairly new community, the but we do have a lot of bridges and other infrastructure. And now we're in the replacement mode for many of the, the sewer and water lines that were installed many years ago. So staff time is balanced between operating and the capital projects. So we do a lot of our capital project, we do all of our capital projects in-house. Many municipalities don't do that. They hire consultants to do this. So we find that having in-house staff to perform this, we can create our own priorities and our own ten timelines as well, but there's a cost to that. We do have a reliance on residential tax rate and council identified that in our strategic plan at the beginning of this term. And we are working towards finding new commercial and industrial opportunities for loyalists. That's our goal. And we work on that almost every day. We're following up on, on, on different leads that we're receiving. Competitive with the neighboring municipalities, I'll get into that in a minute. So we are competitive with neighboring municipalities despite the variation of services. And it's very difficult to compare. Because say, for instance, we have two water and two sewer plants. Napanee would have one. So there's an extra cost to having those splits and those are historical services. So that's why we continue to maintain those. So it's that type of thing. We are doing, as I said, a lot of our capital projects in-house where other municipalities hire that all out. And we also have an urban versus rural service expectation. A lot of our attention is spent on urban. Because that's where our growth is, but we don't want to forget about our rural service expectations as well. And through our roads master plan, usually for our rural as residents, it's transportation and getting to where they need to go. And so improving the condition of our roads and bridges. Next slide, please. So this is my favorite topic to vent a bit about. So I thought I wouldn't miss this opportunity tonight, and I did it last year as well. The OMPF is the province's main general assistance grant to municipalities. The primary, the program primarily supports northern and rural, note the name rural municipalities across the province. Its objectives are to recognize the challenges of northern rural municipalities while targeting funding to those with more challenging fiscal circumstances. It's to support areas with limited property assessment and assist municipalities that are adjusting to year over year funding changes. Now, Mr. Renier did pull this year's allotments for many of the municipalities around us. So we just want to show you this. So you can keep this in your mind. We are very much underfunded and behind the eight ball, so to speak. Lollis receives $466,100. That's a good sum of money and we're grateful for that money. But take a look at the municipalities around us. Attington Highlands receives $2,534,000. Raider Napanee receives $1.6 million, almost 1.6 and a half million. If you had to add 1.6 million to Napanee's tax levy, where would their tax rates be? I would say that they would not be competitive with us. We are seriously underfunded from the province. Stone Mills gets 1.1 million, Central Frotneck 2.2 million. South Frotneck, which touches the city of Kingston, is 1.5 million. Getanacway is 1.3 million. Brockville, the city of Brockville, it's not a township. The city of Brockville receives $1.3 million. And a couple of others that we pulled out because they're neighboring other cities. And I have established a focus groups with their CAOs. North Grenville is just over $1 million. And so that would be Kentville area bordering Ottawa. And Mississippi Mills is 897,000, so just under a million. It again is bordering Ottawa. And then we have Lees and Thousand Islands, which borders, city of Kingston is 963,600. So a lot of the factors that go into the government's calculation for the Ontario Municipal Partnership Fund takes into consideration such elements such as education of our population and average household, average household income. So when we delved into this further, it appears that Lollis is part of the Kingston census. And as we all know, the federal government does the census. And not part of the Lennox and Attington census. I could, would guess that we would receive quite a bit more money through this partnership fund if we were a part of the county census. Now through the mayor, we've been working with Mr. Bossio. We started with Mr. Bossio and now we're working with Mr. Sloan through the census office in Ottawa to see if we can't make that adjustment. I started with the Ministry of Finance in the provincial ministry of finance. I was put over to the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing, who sent me back to the Ministry of Finance. And so we're going around in one big circle. I would suggest that it's time that the mayor write the premier and bring it to his attention and get it sorted out once and for all. No one wants to really take a look at this because they know that we're underfunded by about $1.2 million. Our population is very similar to Greater Napanee, who has all the commercial assessment. Greater Napanee, we don't have any commercial assessment. So if you went by population, if you go by commercial assessment, it's a fund for rural municipalities. We're quite comparable to the Greater Napanee area. How does the city of Brockville qualify for 1.3 million? And the Minister for Municipal Affairs just happens to be from there. So, and we've brought it to Mr. Clark's attention as well. So I'll get off my soapbox, but I just wanted to give you an overview of this is a huge challenge for us. It's not fair and we shouldn't accept it. We need to take this further. Thanks, Bill.
Thank you, Mr. Silver. At this point, I'm going to get into the, the scenarios we brought forward. Does anyone have any questions or comments up to this point, Mr. Mayor?
Council? I see no questions right now. Please go ahead, Mr. Renier.
So at the March 8th council, this resolution was passed and it was, I'll just read it. It was moved by Councilor Porter, seconded by Councilor Parks. That staff brought it back to the committee of the whole meeting on March 15th, 2021, options for reducing the tax rate with various scenarios and their impacts to try and reduce to a tax rate in the area of 2% to 3%. So that is what we have done. And I'm just going to go through those scenarios. Now, and as I said before, if anyone wants to stop me at any point and ask questions, free to answer them. Before we get into our scenarios, I do just want to bring this point out. So the 4% that we, the overall 4% that we've been bringing forward with the 6.2 township rate was based on the, our best estimate at the time of a 2% county tax rate increase. We did receive word Friday last week that the county tax rate is proposed to increase 3.42% and not to 2%. So I just want to make sure this is clear to everyone that that 4% overall that was based on a 2% county is actually now about a 4.5% overall. So that's really the starting point of where we're starting from to tonight. Now the scenarios that we are presenting are still going to present scenarios to get us to a 2% to 3% overall. But I did just want to point that out. And just so we know, we do tend to focus on the overall rate increase. We do provide the townships. But that is because at the end of the day, our residents in Lollis Township receive one tax bill and it comes from us, the township. And so a lot of times we are, we do answer for that. So that's why we like to, to focus on the overall rate increase because at the end of the day, that's what our residents are paying. So with that said, we are bringing scenarios to get us to 2% to 3%. I'm going to go over four scenarios there and they are in the colored marks there. So right now, the baby blue color is what the 1D proposed operating budget is. Like I said, it used to be 4%, but with the county Like I said, it used to be four percent, but with the county coming in at three point four two, that's actually four point five four now. If you look at the screen, what that means is, we had to find an additional about a hundred and seventy-three thousand there. Just to get back to that four percent overall. Now, so we, you may ask, why is there a scenario that's at three point two five? Well, we found out this on Friday, that used to be about a two point seven five. But we do still have scenarios that you can see that would get us to a three point two five overall, which is a three point seven eight township. A two point seven nine overall, which is two point nine two township, two point three seven overall and a two percent overall. Which actually would only be a one point four six percent township increase. So I'm gonna, we're just going to go through these scenarios now. So the proposed operating budget savings, we've kind of separated into three scenarios, or three groups, so there's. Some savings that we've identified under salaries and benefits, operational savings as well as reserve and reserve fund, how we can work that. You can see the the way the color of the scenarios work there, each one will kind of build on the next one. So scenario A, there is the yellow pumpkin color there, and that's about four hundred and twenty thousand. And if you take that and go to scenario B, which is the purple, would add the hundred and fifty thousand. Scenario C then takes that, adds the green to get up to seven hundred and three thousand. And then scenario D would add the hundred and twenty thousand at the top there. So if we did go with scenario D, that would be a potential total budget savings of about eight hundred and twenty-five thousand. So we're just going to work through each one of those scenarios now. So under scenario A, this would move us, again, like I said, with the county rate coming in at three point four two increase. Scenario A would result in an overall rate increase of three point two five percent. For the township, which is a three point seven eight percent increase on the township. And it would result in a levy requirement of about eighteen point two six million. And that's about four hundred and twenty thousand dollars less than what the proposed first draft of the budget was. And to get there. This scenario includes about ninety-one thousand in delayed new positions. So what that is, is new positions that were proposed in the first draft. A lot of them with the exception, with a few exceptions, would be delayed to not be hired before July first of this year. And by delaying those positions, it just smoothes out the transition to the new positions this year and saves about ninety-one thousand there. We're also proposing deferring new positions, so there's three staff initiatives that we're proposing to be deferred. I will go into them in a little more detail on the next slide, that's about a hundred and fifty thousand in savings. Councillor benefits there, ninety-eight hundred dollars. What that is, is the, in the first draft budget, we did do the budget as if all councillors opted into the benefit program. We are, not all councillors have, and we're confident in not budgeting, only budgeting five of the seven councillors to actually opt into that. So that would result in ninety-eight hundred dollars in savings. We have in operational, we have a reduction in contracted services and materials. I do have a slide coming up on that, that will go into further detail on that, that's about a hundred and eight thousand in proposed savings. We have seventeen thousand in deferred furniture and equipment, and that is through Public Works. And basically, that is deferring any new furniture equipment that would be associated with the County Road Six Garage Expansion. Due to the timing of the construction and that, we feel that we could defer that to twenty twenty-two. And then the, there's forty-four thousand in recycling stewardship fees. What that is, is after our first proposed budget, we actually got news that our stewardship fees that the township perceives. Have actually increased by forty-four thousand over last year. So in the first draft of the budget, there was a hundred and fifty-six thousand in that revenue line. And we can upgrade, update that now to two hundred thousand, so that'd be forty-four thousand in additional revenue, which is awfully fantastic. So in speaking about the deferred new positions for a hundred and fifty thousand, the three initiatives that were proposing to defer. When I say defer, that means they will be removed from the twenty twenty-one budget. The first one is there, there's fifty-four thousand there in the IT coordinator position that was proposed. The comments there are out of the appendix A of the Budget Binder. But a lot of that IT coordinator was to better position IT to be proactive and ahead of tasks. So whether it's preventative maintenance, increased divisional knowledge. And really, the idea is, as we know, when we become more reliant on technology. It was proposed to help ensure the stability and security of the township. And part of that too is the, to look at the possibility of decreasing outside contract assistance. So we are proposing to defer that, there is further work going on in that division. In creating an IT master plan, which I believe was recommended in the SDR. Another position we're proposing to defer is a facility maintenance operator. So currently, right now, there are two facility maintenance operators, there was a proposal to add a third. Full-time facility maintenance operator. And what that position would allow the township to do is, would allow facility, facility services to perform maintenance in a more timely manner. And the goal of facility maintenance is really to manage all the township open properties and reduce contracted services. So this position was to help with that. So I do just want to note that in deferring this, there is currently a project going on where. Facilities and different departments are keeping track of contracted services they are using in twenty twenty-one. For example, at the fire hall, if they have to bring in a contracted service to do something, we are tracking that this year, so. At come the fall, we can look at that and say, if we did have this third facility maintenance operator, what contracted services could have been reduced? So we will probably bring that back in the future, but for now, so I do just want to mention that that is ongoing. And the the third staff initiative we're proposing to defer is a, says public works operator, so. In the SDR, there is a recommendation to look at possibly converting now six contract positions to a full, to three full-time. And in this year's budget, we have proposed to to start that with two contracts into one full-time. So we're we're proposing to defer that at this time. And part of the push to move towards more full-time set of contracts is that it is becoming increasingly difficult. For Public Works to fill contract positions. And it would help stabilize summer and winter operations and the. Full-time positions does reduce training and recruitment costs year over year when we're hiring contract. So those are the deferred new positions that staff is proposing. The contracted services and material proposed savings of a hundred and eight thousand mainly comes from these three areas within Public Works. First one there that's mentioned is the crack ceiling program. So in twenty twenty-one, they were initiating a crack ceiling program. And what they're proposing now for some savings is to really, is to reduce that budget, proposed budget by about fifty percent. So it will get the program off the ground and running and get it initiated and, but really just to smooth that out. They're also proposing to reduce the asphalt contingency for patching. And also to reduce the bridge protectant program, and what that means is they would just. Apply the bridge protectant to less, less bridges in twenty twenty-one. So those are the operating savings.
Excuse me, Phil, could we just ask for questions through each scenario to make sure that, since they build on each other, that council understands?
Yeah, yeah, the next slide is just the summary of scenario A, so that would. So just to come back, so just to rehash, so scenario A again, is the yellow line on the thing there which would. Move it to an overall tax rate of three point two five or levy of eighteen point two six and. Or township rate of three point seven eight. So again, as Mr. Silver said, these scenarios will build on each other, so if there's any questions on scenario A. Proposed savings, that would be a good time to discuss them.
Council? I look for comments or questions. I'll go to the deputy.
Thank you, excuse me, just a couple of short questions. The last slide with the. Yes, that one. If we, if we completely fulfill this at the full hundred and eight thousand. Is there concern of escalating capital costs in the future considering that? Well, two of them for sure are are increase the longevity of our infrastructure, if it is completed, the crack ceiling and the bridge protectant. And with structures being so expensive to do any work on. And typically have a lot of requirements. Whether it's environmental or traffic. I just don't, I want to get a feel for if the hundred and eight thousand savings here. Will generate millions of dollars worth of costs. In four or five years with capital construction.
I I note that the director of the public, of that department has come on screen. Ms. McFarland, do you have comment and answer to the deputy's question?
Um, through you, through you, Mr. Mayor. Delaying any maintenance programs, yes, does incur. Capital costs to the the extent of the amount of capital costs. I can't answer that off the top of my head. I do have the Public Works manager is available, I'm not sure if. He could provide a further question, but ultimately, yes, it will, it will increase costs. I'm not exactly sure how much. It's like any maintenance program, right? If you, if you don't do your maintenance, then in the end, your costs are higher. What we have proposed, we feel is manageable. I can say that.
Okay, thank you, and just one other question, Your Worship. The one option was not going to the full-time public works operator, but staying with the seasonal. This really isn't changing the staffing levels, it would just. Maintain them on contract, if I understand it correctly. And if I remember right, could you just remind us? I I believe this winter we had difficulty trying to attract employees. Could I just get some kind of confirmation on? On that?
Yeah, through you, Mr. Mayor, we had to advertise on three different occasions for our winter contract. Positions this year in order to. Obtain the number that we wanted. But in saying that, we also had a higher number this year than we normally would have. To try and protect our staff in case of a COVID outbreak or sickness. We wanted to make sure we would have the proper amount of staff in order to maintain for the roads for winter control. So we did have difficulty filling, but we did have two extra people that we normally wouldn't have had. Okay, if we weren't in a pandemic.
Okay, thank you, that's all.
Thank you, any other questions or comments with regard to the items in scenario A at this time? I see no other hands up at this time. I'll turn it back to you, Mr. Renia.
Thank you very much, so we're gonna move on now to scenario B, and that would be the purple line there in the chart. So just go to scenario B, would take us to a two point nine, two point seven nine percent overall rate increase. Which is a two point nine two percent township. And that would move our levy down to eighteen point one million, which is a decrease of about five hundred and seventy thousand from our one D. So as I said, these scenarios are going to build on each other, so scenario B would take that four hundred and eighteen thousand, nine hundred savings from scenario A. And it would add a hundred and fifty thousand dollars from our working fund contribution. So the currently in our operating budget, we have been budgeting the last couple of years, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in a contribution to our working fund. And this goes, this may speak to part of what councillor Booter brought up at the last council meeting on the working fund. And so staff has proposed an operating surplus deficit management policy, which is a new thing for the township. And I, and we do feel that between that policy, which now provides some direction on what to do with surplus. As well as the, there currently is a projected surplus for twenty twenty's year end, it is un-audited, but we are expecting that. And there are some additional twenty twenty-one quarter one savings right now in existing vacant positions of about a hundred and twenty thousand. So when you factor all those things in, we do feel that we could eliminate the hundred and fifty thousand dollar. Contribution to the working fund from the proposed budget. And just so council knows, based on the, as the things I said there, on the un-audited balance for twenty twenty. And our proposed usages in twenty twenty-one, we are expecting to be around three and a half percent of our target of five percent. So we do feel that the working fund will still be in a, in a, in a fair, fairly good position at the end of twenty twenty-one. So that's why we feel that we could eliminate that contribution at that, at this time. So just to recap, with that additional hundred and fifty thousand, again, that puts us down to the two point seven nine. Overall tax rate increase there and. So that, that's scenario B, are there any, any questions on scenario B?
Council? See none? Okay, go ahead, Mr. Renia.
But the next scenario, scenario C there is going to be the green line and the scenario C would. Get us to a two point three seven percent overall tax rate increase, which is a two point one six percent township tax rate increase. And as before, which would be about an eighteen million dollar levy requirement. Or a reduction of about seven hundred thousand from the initial proposed budget. So we would take the five hundred and sixty-eight thousand, nine hundred savings from scenario B. And we'd add about a hundred and thirty-five thousand more in additional reserve and reserve fund savings. And I will just kind of go through where those, where that hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars is coming from. So we're proposing, we could save twenty-six thousand, six hundred off our fleet reserve fund. So just for council's knowledge, in twenty twenty, we contributed three hundred and ninety thousand to our fleet reserve out of our operating budget. The first draft of the budget that was presented to council increased this contribution by seventy-six thousand or up to four hundred and sixty-six thousand. So what we're saying is we could reduce that increase over prior year to fifty thousand, we'd still be. Budgeting four hundred and forty thousand as the contribution to reserve, which is still an increase of fifty thousand over last year and. Just for council's knowledge. Based on the asset management plan over the next twenty years. Our target contribution of where we would like to get that fleet reserve to is approximately around six hundred thousand dollars a year. To provide stable funding for fleet reserve, so we are still working in that direction, saving that twenty-six thousand, obviously just. Just slows down, slows that down to getting to where we want, but we are still moving in the right direction. The other potential reserve, reserve fund savings is forty-four thousand, four hundred from landfill closure cost. And as you can see, last year's contribution in the budget was just over fifteen thousand. And the one D in the first draft of the budget that was presented increased this up to sixty thousand, which is a forty-four thousand dollar increase. And we are proposing that we couldn't eliminate this increase and maintain the status quo for twenty twenty-one. In light of the current situation around the pandemic and budget pressures. Just for council's knowledge, the overall target contribution of this in future years, we would like to get it up to around a hundred thousand dollars a year. Sorry, so just so council knows, currently, right now, the. Landfill closure costs are projected to be combined about two point eight million dollars at present value. We currently have between our liability and our current reserves about eight hundred thousand. So really, in essence, we need to raise about two million dollars over the next twenty years. Which is, basic math is about that target of a hundred thousand a year. So again, we can eliminate that, keep status quo for one year in light of the situation. Again, that just delays us getting to that target contribution down the road. And then the final reserve, reserve fund is sixty-four thousand and the modernization grants. And this is made up of two things, and this has really come about because since the first draft of the budget. There is a municipal modernization intake to opportunities. And the due date was actually today and we can tell council, the. Staff have put through four proposals to take advantage of the municipal modernization intake too. So what we're saying is, currently in the one D budget, there is forty thousand allocated from prior modernization money received two years ago. For projects that would come out of the service delivery review. We're saying we're going to take forty thousand of that and earmark it for other initiatives that are already included in the budget. An example given there is the pay equity study. The risk with this is, we're taking that gamble that one of our applications or may, maybe all four. Will get uptaken, will receive funding, the risk is, of course, if we don't, if none of those applications are successful. Then we are taking a gamble on that. In addition to that forty thousand, there is twenty-four thousand in twenty twenty that was not used, that was in the budget. For twenty twenty to be used, but due to the surplus position we're in for twenty twenty, we don't feel we need to use that, so there is twenty-four thousand. That we can now bring over to twenty twenty-one's budget. So all that added up together amounts to a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars in potential reserve, reserve fund savings. So again, just to recap, scenario C. So again, just to recap, scenario C would get us to a level levy of 18 million, which is 2.37% overall rate increase or a township increase of 2.176. Um, are there any questions around those reserve fund savings?
Comments or questions from counsel? And deputy, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, just a question on the modernization grant. Have we committed any funds to be spent to other levels of government on the modernization of the township? Um, because we did receive funds previously, and I just can't recall if we are committed to spending more, which means if we follow through with reducing um, the funds here, are we gonna be in a deficit if we do have to carry out a project?
Uh, through you, your worship. Uh, we don't have any, uh, future commitment to other levels of government for spending. Uh, so we initially received, uh, an amount of money for modernization as all municipalities did uh, to be used in other projects, which we did. Last year, we received $100,000 to complete a service delivery review, which we spent. And so this year, uh, building on the service delivery review, we are recommending the big project here is to gather the municipalities within the county to talk about service delivery partnerships, develop business plans and service agreements. That would not take place, um, if this is cut. So again, it's an investment that we were hoping would pay dividend in the future.
Okay, other questions? If you know hands, I actually, I have a question with regard to, if you go back one slide, please. Uh, with regard to both the fleet reserve fund and the landfill closure costs. Uh, I note that, you know, in, in 2020, we had the 390 and we had in the first draft projected adding $76,000 to it. Uh, this one, we're reducing that amount to, in this idea, we're reducing that amount to 50,000. I'm wondering basically where that hard number came from. Could it be reduced to 40,000? Could it be only reduced to 60,000? Is it, that's, that's just a, uh, an, an item of discrimination for, for counsel at this point. Is that correct?
That is, uh, yeah, that is correct.
Again, recognizing that our goal in our asset management plan is to get that number up to 600,000 annually. Yeah. And the, the rough, the same basic idea would apply to the land closure costs, I'm, I'm assuming?
Yes, correct, yeah.
Okay, so we can, I'll say play with that number to, uh, uh, as counsel desires. Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments with regard to this, uh, uh, they, their section scenario C? Thank you.
Uh, just before we leave that, your worship, uh, from a staff point of view, we felt that we are maybe just being a little too aggressive in trying to hit the level that we hope to get to. So, uh, there was no hard amount. Uh, so we can still play with that if counsel directs us to do that.
Thank you. All right, other comments? Then I think we move on to scenario D.
Okay, scenario D, as you can see, there is the red line. So once again, with the county rate coming in at 3.42, the, to get to an overall scenario D would get to the overall 2%, which is actually a 1.46% increase on the, uh, the township. So, uh, which would get us to a 17.86 million dollar levy requirement, which is a decrease of about 825,000. So again, it would take the scenario C savings that we've talked about of 703,000 and would add 121,900 from, uh, Q quarter one savings in 2021 from existing vacant positions. What we mean by that is there's a number of positions currently in the township, existing positions that just happened to be vacant at the beginning of the year that have not been filled as of, uh, the first quarter up to this date. If you look at that, it adds up to about $121,000 in savings. Now, I would call it, the caution I would, would say with this is that we have used that as one of the justifications in eliminating the $150,000 working fund contribution. Because in theory, these Q1 savings would end up as a, in theory, a surplus at the end of 2021, which based on our surplus, uh, management policy would flow back into the reserve. So that's why we do feel comfortable in eliminating that $150,000 contribution from scenario, uh, B. Um, the other caution I would say is these are not permanent savings. So if you did want to, uh, quote unquote bake these into this year's budget to get it down further, these positions exist, they will most likely, I assume, be filled prior to next year. So we would, you are putting that $120,000 pressure on next year's tax rate. So I think it's important to consider that, um, when getting to scenario D. But again, um, I'm having a leg here. But just to summarize, that is scenario D. Like I said, it does get us to an overall 2%, which is a 1.46 township. And that's 17.86 million dollar levy. Are there, are there any questions on that?
Counsel?
Or comments?
No? Oh, the deputy, go ahead.
I don't have a question. I would make a comment on this if it's appropriate now, your worship.
Go ahead.
To be quite honest, that scenario I'm not fond of, um, because we're kind of tricking ourselves into thinking we're saving money when we're not, when this is basically counting the funds in two different places from what I can see. And also, um, it's not a reduction, it's just that the position hasn't been filled yet. So, um, saving the Q, the Q1 savings, I would rather see it in the first scenario where it's used in the, in, uh, oh, I'm trying to think of the name of it now, but it was.
The working fund contribution?
That's it. That's the one. I'd rather we see it counted there and not in, in scenario D and just keep it very clean. And going forward, we know what our, what our employee costs are then. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments at this time? With regard to, I'll say, scenario D or any of the prior scenarios?
I do have a couple high-level summary slides coming up. If people want to wait till after that, make their overall comment. Just.
I'm seeing nods. Go ahead, Mr. Mr. Enya.
Um, so again, this, this is one of the high-level scenarios. So again, there's the, uh, four scenarios we presented, A, B, C, and D, and kind of the savings to get there. Um, I think you've probably seen that slide enough, so I don't want to hurt too much on that right now. But I did want to just provide a high-level summary of what the 2021, um, tax bill impact would be, because we've talked about this before. So what this slide shows is that on the $300,000 assessment of an assessment property, what this means, so right now, um, you can see in the top right corner that there's the scenarios. Right now, we're that baby blue. So a 4.5 for overall with a 6.16 township. What that means, if you want to look at it from a township perspective, um, it's an increase of $144 over last year, an extra $12 a month. If you're looking at from an overall tax bill perspective, it's an increase of $196. So that's kind of our starting point tonight for these scenarios. And you can see where we're working down. So at the end of the day, if you're looking at the overall tax bill, again, with our proposed increase, the county at 3.42 and a flat education. Right now, our proposed scenario is $16 a month increase. If we get down to scenario D where it is the overall two with the 1.4 township, you're talking about a $7 month increase on the overall bill or a $3 increase, um, on the township's monthly bill. Or, or if you want to look at it over the years, you know, scenario A is an extra $88 this year on the township bill, 68 under scenario B, $50 scenario C, and $34 annually on scenario D. So that, that, that's kind of the end of the presentation. Um, we, we do ask, I put this slide up here. So this is the recommendation that, um, we are gonna need direction from counsel on um, going forward to bring a proposed budget to, uh, to, to, to counsel. And then, um, and as I add to every budget presentation, budget is a policy document. Further reports and bylaws throughout the year will need to come forward. Um, so in saying that, are there any further questions? If people want me to go back to the prior slide that shows the scenarios or?
Counsel, have any questions with regard to any of those details? Or we can open up the floor for comments and, and direction from counsel? Uh, Counsel Budrick, I saw your hand. Go ahead.
More of a comment than a question. Um, as we go through things, through this, uh, I guess it's just my opinion, but there are some things in A. Um, and, uh, and see that, uh, I'm okay with taking it, but there are some things there that still, um, are very important. It, I mean, I know it's, the staff has done a ton of work on this. Um, uh, it just, uh, I guess a little more massaging. Uh, I, I mean, and I guess that's for counsel to do though, but for us to talk about.
Thank you. Right, I very much agree. Other comments from counsel? Deputy, go ahead.
Just building on Counsel Budrick's comment there, a question back to staff. This is neatly packaged into, uh, scenarios, which is great. But, uh, when we look at this further, um, like Counsel Budrick, I see some areas where I agree 100% and other ones that I have concerns with, so we may want to pick and choose a little bit. I guess without us actually going through that yet, staff may not be able to comment on this, but was that anticipated when this was done? Or do staff have them packaged that way in that one? If we change one package, one scenario, it adversely impacts another scenario?
Mr. Enya?
Um, I, I would say those, there, there's definitely the opportunity for counsel to, um, play with it or however you want to word that. Um, they, they were presented in a way to build on each other in the sense that the options on their scenario A from a staff perspective, um, we're comfortable with. Um, we feel good with that as well as, um, like, you know, building on to scenario B, um, the working fund contributions staff are pretty comfortable with. But like anything, maybe you don't want to eliminate the entire $150,000 contribution to working fund. You want to make it 50,000. I mean, that's really counsel's prerogative. So I mean, we're, we're definitely open for, um, however counsel wants to, um, take it. We were just, the, the aim was to provide different scenarios to fall between the 2% to 3% as we were, um, um, resolution to do at the last council. But certainly, um, looking at that list there, counsel can kind of go through. And as we said earlier on the reserve funds, maybe we just keep the reserve fleet reserve flat to last year. I mean, it's, it's really up to, up to counsel on that.
And, thank you. Sir Enya, would it be possible if counsel does decide to go through, I'll say, the individual items within each of the scenarios? Uh, and, you know, I'll say cherry pick, uh, to get the most appropriate for our residents. Would it be possible for you or your staff to, uh, kind of be working on a, a, a working spreadsheet to do the math as we go?
Uh, I, I certainly can. It would help if I could stop sharing my screen to do that. So that seems to be making my computer not happy.
Okay. Uh, let's, let's go to counsel and figure out what they want to do. I'll go to Counsel Parks.
Yeah, that's, oh, sorry. Um, I'd say if they do present a scenario and maybe give us five, 10 minutes and we can come back with a recalculation. It'd probably be the best.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Counsel Parks, go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, I just wanted to say thank you to the staff for doing this. This has been very helpful to have it broken down this way to, uh, actually kind of see where we can possibly save some, um, some increases. I just wondered if it might be worthwhile to, um, set like a dollar, dollar value by the scenarios. Um, and I don't know if that's an option that we can do. So for instance, option A, rather than it being the full 418,000, we go with 400,000, and then that goes back to your staff to look at just as an option to try to move this forward. That's all.
And that would be a, a, a method certainly. And, um, again, if counsel wants to do it that way, then, then we certainly can. And I look for other comments from counsel before we continue. No one else? Okay, counsel, just as a, a matter of, of, uh, how we work through this, do you want to go back to scenario A and, and have individual discussions about the items within scenario A? I'll ask, uh, Mr. Renia to bring up scenario A on, on, uh, on the, on the share. And as you had noted before, maybe take some notes as we're discussing so that we can, uh, get the math done for us towards the end of it.
If, if it's easier for counsel, the slide that's currently shared, um, scenario A is those yellow, um, things. I don't, I don't know. Like I could go back to scenario A or?
Is counsel comfortable with the, I'll say, the abbreviated, uh, titles that's currently on this slide for the, for the yellow? Right? Okay, then I'll look to counsel for comments on the yellow items. Counsel Budrick, go ahead.
I just looked at my, uh, pay slip from the last time and it sees that I'm getting benefits. So if it's $4,900 a counselor, um, I do not require them. So there's $4,900 there that you can even add to the 9,800 you have. That's one start. Um, I'm okay with, uh, delaying new positions, deferring, but not getting ready, getting, getting rid of the vacant ones that's there. Um, contracted services, as much as it may hurt our infrastructure. The director said it looks like it could be all right. Um, and the recycling, the stewardship, I'm fine with those, all those items in, in, in A.
So your suggestion is if I can summarize that is to slightly increase the council benefit savings, uh, but leave the rest?
Uh, so far, yeah. I mean, I imagine that, uh, the other counselors will weigh in on, on, uh, I, A as, as well. So I was just gonna stop after A.
Okay, thank you. Other comment, Counsel Parks, go ahead.
I would just agree with what, uh, Counsel Budrick has mentioned. I think, uh, that's a good starting point at 418,000 that we can move forward on.
Thank you. Other comments from counsel? And deputy, go ahead.
I, I agree with the other, with the two counselors, uh, spoke so far. Um, I, I did have real concerns, but I asked the questions and the, and the director did, uh, respond, um, positively. So that quelled my fears on, on a couple of the items.
Okay, so it sounds like unless there's other comments, it sounds like we're comfortable with the savings presented in scenario A. And Counsel Budrick, are you, uh, uh, wishing to add to the, uh, the counselor benefits item?
Um, well, I saw that I was participating and I do not need to, so that's something else we can add to is removing my benefits. I don't, yeah, I, that's fine by me. So that'll, that'll, not only, that'll be 418.9 plus whatever one more counselor's benefits would be.
Yeah. I'll go to, uh, the deputy treasurer, his hand up for comment on that.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, so currently, so that 9,800 represents basically we're budgeting that five out of the seven counselors would enroll. So if, if we do want to increase that, we could add $4,900, um, to the budget savings.
I'll do a straw poll on that. And any objections? I'm seeing nothing, so let's, let's add that 49. Okay, other than that, other comments on scenario A? I see none. Let's move on to scenario B. That would be the purple items, and that represents the $150,000 from the or not contributing $150,000 to the working fund capital, the working fund, working capital fund. That's what it's called. And Counsel Parks, go ahead.
Sorry, uh, just based on what the deputy treasurer has said, um, and my understanding of this, I think this would be a good option for counsel to remove for this and, and use that fund to, um, help support the budget for this year.
And so you're supporting that? Counsel Budrick as well?
In agreeance with, in agreeance with Counsel Porter, yes. Or Parks, sorry.
Any other comments? Seeing none, so I guess we're in support of continuing with that scenario B. Okay, scenario C. We have, uh, various, uh, reserve fund contributions and the modernization grant. Comments? I'll start with Counsel Parks, then Hegador, and then Boudrick.
Um, I would support removing the fleet reserve fund, the 26,000 as proposed. I'm not comfortable taking out the landfill closure, um, or we should maybe look at reducing that. The modernization grant, um, I think we need to leave that there. That would be my suggestion.
So leave the 44 or leave the 64 in, uh, not, not remove it as this is suggesting. And, uh, leave the landfill 44 in as, uh, to continue to contribute that, but take the 26 out. Just summary. Right, I, before I go to the other two that I've already mentioned, I do see the deputy treasures. And?
Just a comment on the modernization, um, 24, that's 60. Just a comment on the modernization, um twenty four, that sixty four is basically savings from twenty twenty that we haven't had to use that was earmarked to use. So I, I, I think that like twenty four, that sixty four is definitely safe to to leave in to help out, help out budget. It's really the forty thousand that's um the rejigging, I guess, would be the proper way to say.
Okay.
Just so clear on that.
So Council Parks, are you comfortable with making that number, the, the twenty four instead of the sixty four?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, next hand I saw was deputy mayor's.
Thank you. Um, the modernization grant, the twenty four thousand, I'm, I'm comfortable with that. I do have concerns with the other two, the fleet and the landfill, simply because we're gonna have to pay the bill at some point and if we don't build reserves now to offset potential saving or potential expenses later, we are going to be hit with bigger bills down the road. Um, the landfill closure is not going to get any cheaper and it's not going to get any easier. Um, so taking money from that is a concern to me. We're saying twenty years, but that depends on the volume that goes in and, and our licensing and everything else. So if all of a sudden that got bumped back to fifteen years, now we're really in trouble trying to raise enough funds without going in debt or a large tax increase in the future or higher bag tags or something like that. Um, so I have concerns with the landfill and fleet. Basically, it's the same thing. Um, every time I buy a vehicle, it costs more. We know that the township does need vehicles um to not plan ahead for the replacement of vehicles. Um, in my mind, that's, that's not prudent. Um, I would prefer to see so my, to sum it up, I would like to see the fleet, the landfill stay in and the modernization um reduced by the twenty four thousand that the deputy uh treasurer had mentioned there, the carry in, carryover from last year.
Uh, just re- reduce to twenty four thousand, so it'd be reduced to forty.
Yes.
Right, just, just so we're clear.
Correct. Sorry, I, yes, that's what I meant.
Okay, Council Parks said, uh, I was supposed to go to Council Budrick next, but is this a, an add-on comment? Go ahead.
Yeah, yes, sorry. Yes, sorry, Your Worship. I'm just looking for clarification from the deputy treasurer. Uh, we're still increasing the fleet reserve by roughly sixty thousand dollars even with not doing the twenty six thousand, because I think it was in two thousand and twenty, it was three hundred and ninety thousand dollars and now it's gone up to four sixty six. So we still are, sorry.
Sorry, the, the, the four sixty six was what was in the first draft of the budget that we presented about a month ago.
Yes.
Um, what we're saying is if we scale back twenty six, uh twenty twenty one's revised budget would be four hundred and forty thousand. So we're still increasing by over fifty thousand from last year.
Right, so we still are building the fund, we're just not building it by as much.
As fast, yeah.
Yeah, thank you. That was clarification I was looking for.
Okay, thank you. And Deputy Mayor, you were done? Thank you. Then I'll go to Council Budrick.
Um, so like Council Parks, I'm good with the reduction in the fleet reserve fund marginally. Um, unless it's a safety concern, because we obviously need to make sure that our employees have uh vehicles that they can feel safe in. Um, that'd be the only thing I have a problem with. I definitely agree with the deputy mayor that the money for the la- uh landfill needs to stay there. Um, and I'm very uh acceptable with the, the change to modern, modernization grant.
Thank you. Other comments? I will add my own comments here if I could. Um, uh, with regard to the landfill, we've been repeatedly told when we get the uh annual landfill um assessment done, uh that while we have twenty plus years of capacity left in, in both of our landfills, right, uh, it is most likely that eventually it will not be the capacity that closes those landfills. But I don't, things like seepage or environmental standards or, or things of that nature, those are of grave concern to me and we need to be prepared. And as the deputy treasurer noted, uh, we currently have uh less than a million of an estimated three million uh sitting in that reserve fund. So I think we need to keep that at the, at the higher value and not chop that one out. Conversely, I'm not on the same page as, as everyone else with regard to the uh fleet management. You know, we, we are contributed, last year we contributed three hundred and ninety to add either the seventy six that, that was proposed or the fifty, even at fifty, it's still well in excess of a ten or twelve percent increase in that uh contribution to the reserve. Yes, we need to grow it and yes, we need to grow it up to six hundred over time. But is this the year that we need to be growing it at, at, at ten or twelve percent uh increase rate? I think growing it at a more, more moderate uh rate or even freezing it at the contribution from last year would be something that, that would be tolerable, in my opinion. Uh, it's not taking away from it, but it's not growing it uh in, in this current, current year. And as far as the modernization, I, I, I think I'm in agreement with what else has been said. Uh, the twenty four is a savings that we've already have in place. The forty, we still need to move forward with the, uh, the other projects. And again, I, I would like the other comments, other comments from other members of council. I'm seeing none. And then do we have a consensus or is someone willing to put forward a, a, a motion for this one? I'll take Council Parks.
I'll ta- I'll attempt this. Um, so I would motion that um uh council directs staff to go back and redo the numbers uh based on the fact that we're looking to take out four hundred and eighteen dollars off a schedule for scenario A, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars off of scenario B and fifty thousand off of uh scenario C, which represents the twenty six thousand or the, sorry, um, the fleet reserve as well as uh twenty thousand dollars for the modernization grant, or twenty four thousand for the modernization, which should add up to six hundred and eighteen thousand dollars.
Okay, and that, and I'm assuming that's not necessarily a final yet, that's just an amendment to the, the draft that's before us?
Yes.
Right, okay, then I'll take that as the motion and staff have clarity on that? Yeah, that's, okay, and Council Budrick, you're seconding that?
Uh, no, friendly amendment, if possible, first.
I'll let, let, let's get a second or first. And, and can I have a second on, on the uh motion to amend? No second? And Council Budrick, you're seconding? Or you're, okay.
With a friendly.
I'll take the second and then I'll ask for a friendly. Go ahead.
Um, the friendly member would add in the, the change, the council benefit uh would actually add another forty nine hundred dollars to savings as well as I would honestly uh taking your recommendation, sir, um to uh uh the fleet reserve that you had, had spoke of and you could uh, uh, give Council Parks that exact dollar amount. Uh, I'm, I'm, I'm on board with uh your insight on that, sir.
Think that's a significant enough change that it might not be friendly, Council Parks?
I'd be okay with that.
Okay, then the number uh, uh, you asked me to make up a number now, um, with regard to the fleet reserve. Let's target the fleet reserve and I'll, I'll, I'll put it in there for consideration at twenty five thousand contrib- an additional twenty five thousand contribution this year. Uh, so saving another twenty five thousand from the fifty that's proposed. And uh, that's the number. So Council Budrick, is that now part of your friendly? And Council Parks, is that now part, do you accept that as a friendly to your amendment?
I, I do.
Okay, thank you. And again, there's, we've bounced the numbers around a little bit. Staff, do we have comfort? Go ahead.
Yeah, so uh by my math, um, we have uh four hundred and twenty three thousand eight hundred from scenario A. That includes the forty nine hundred dollar increase for Council Budrick, the hundred and fifty thousand from scenario B, and then the uh twenty six, six hundred from fleet reserve plus an additional twenty five and uh the twenty four thousand out of modernization. So my revised number now is six hundred and forty nine thousand four hundred in savings. That, my understanding?
Six forty nine?
Four hundred.
Okay.
Six hundred and forty nine thousand four hundred.
And do we have clarity, council, on, on those numbers at this time? And I think so, right? Mover, do you want to make any further comment?
Uh, just quickly, yeah, I, I believe that sort of gets us down to an increase on the tax portion from the, from the council, or sorry, from the township between two point three and two point seven, uh based on the numbers that we were looking at um for what we needed to, to trim from the budget. So um, I think that's good.
Okay, I would note that we, uh, before we continue, and, and I will ask for the continued comments, which we do have a motion on the floor. But I'll note that we have not at this point discussed the scenario D. Right, uh, so that would still be part, part of our further discussions. Council Parks has spoken. I think I saw the deputy mayor next.
Thank you. Um, you just answered my first question with schedule D. Um, the other is, I just want to make sure that I've got clear the motion. Because it sums up the three scenarios. So, so just confirmation from either the mover or the deputy, um, the sense, consensus that we did on, on scenario A and B, those are the numbers that he was using and then C, um, twenty four thousand for modernization and roughly fifty thousand for fleet would be removed. Was, did I hear that correctly?
That, that is my understanding, yes. And then uh the part of scenario A has the additional forty nine hundred added for uh Council Budrick for benefits.
Okay.
Yeah, so the, the, the fleet reserve contribution there in green would be fifty one thousand six hundred would be the savings off the proposed one D budget and then twenty four thousand on the modernization.
Okay.
Okay.
Clarity, deputy?
Yes, I just wanted to make sure I had all the numbers straight in my head. The fleet reserve is still the one that I'm not a hundred percent on, but it's probably not going to be the straw that broke the camel's back.
Okay, other comments? We have an amendment to the draft proposed budget right for the first three scenarios. I'll look for final comments. Then I'll call the question. All those in favor of the amended, the proposed amendments, raise a hand, please. Any opposed? Thank you. Motion is carried. Uh, if we could move to scenario D. And uh to being uh the Q one savings from existing vacant positions, the deputy has spoken to it previously. I'll look for council comments and/or motions. Uh, Council Budrick, go ahead.
Uh, I'm in agreement with the deputy on this. Um, they are positions we do require and we are lucky enough to have saved some money uh as the deputy treasurer mentioned uh by them not being filled in the first quarter, but they are necessities uh that uh were uh positions that were uh filled pre- previously that we definitely uh need to be filled to make sure that we run properly.
Thank you. Other comments? Do I gather then that the, the, I'll say consensus, and I know we don't do things by consensus here, but the consensus is to not include in our proposed reductions, the one twenty one nine uh that is for the Q one savings. Can I get a motion just to clear, make sure that we're good? Thank you, deputy. So moved?
Yes.
Thank you, Council Budrick, seconded. Thank you. Any comments on that one? And Council Parks, go ahead.
I will be supporting that.
Thank you. Anyone else? I'll call the question. All those in favor, please raise a hand. Any opposed? Motion is carried. Okay, at this point, we've gone through the four scenarios. We've made some adjustments. Uh, does the deputy treasurer have a, a number? Or does he want a few minutes?
If, if I could have a couple of minutes just to make sure, um, it, it will be in the ballpark of about two and a half percent overall. Um, per my math, it's going to be a levy requirement of eighty million thirty two thousand six hundred, which is a decrease off of that blue line of um six hundred and forty nine thousand four hundred. So if you don't mind, if I can stop sharing my screen, give me maybe five minutes and I'll come back with the exact numbers so that we can put it in that recommendation for you.
Council, would uh, would, would a brief recess be appropriate at this time to allow the deputy treasurer to come to those numbers? Okay, I have on my clock seven twenty two. Let's call it, we'll take a recess and we'll resume. Uh, deputy treasurer, if I said seven thirty, you're comfortable?
Yep, yep.
Okay, let's take a recess until seven thirty. Thank you. I have seven-thirty, if the deputy is available. Thank you, and welcome back. I called the meeting back to order from the brief recess. Mr. Deputy Treasurer, have you had an opportunity to do the numbers for us?
I have. If we want, I can share my screen again.
And we, thank you.
That's the one. So, what I would say is, just come back here. So, yeah, updating the numbers, what it means, at the end of the day, the township rate will be increasing two-point-four-seven percent, which equates to an overall township tax rate of two-point-five-four percent. And you can see there, we've come down six hundred and forty-nine thousand four hundred. So if we look on the chart there, it falls in just between that two-point-five and two-point-five-six overall, between that six forty-three and six sixty. So, yeah, so two-point-four-seven percent township rate increase and a two-point-five-four overall tax rate increase. So I took the liberty to update the recommendation there. It would require a township tax levy of eighteen million thirty-two thousand six hundred, and the township residential tax rate would be set at zero-point-zero-zero-seven-nine-seven-eight-five-three.
Thank you very much. I go to council. Do we have comments on this recommendation at this time, or comments on the budget in general? I note that Council Gordon hasn't returned yet. Someone reach out to him to see if he's able to? Maybe he's having technical difficulties? There he is. Okay. And with that, you can see before us, we have a recommendation. We still have opportunity for other changes if council desires. I'm seeing no hands, no comments. Leads me to a position of looking for a mover for a recommendation. Deputy Mayor, so move the recommendation before us?
Yes.
Thank you. Council Boudrick, you're seconding that? Thank you. I'll go to the mover for comment.
Thank you. First off, I want to thank staff for going through this again and taking a hard look at it, and coming up with quite a few options for us to look at. It really helps when when we have a variety of items to look at like that, and be ready with answers and flexibility, be able to rework the numbers as we work through it. So first off, thanks to the staff for doing that, and basically on the budget, I'm happy with this one. Basically, two-point-five is a very reasonable number, and I think, I think, I'm hoping that the residents are satisfied with it, and that we still are able to carry on the required duties that we have, and be able to move the township further ahead with the funds that we have.
Thank you, Deputy. Council Boudrick, you have comment?
I'd like to, as well, thank the staff echoing the deputy mayor's comments. As much as nobody likes an increase, when the county's hitting us with three-point-four percent, and we're able to keep it under that very much closer to a cost of living, it's kudos to the staff for good work. Thank you.
Other comments from other members of council? Seeing none, I would remind council that this recommendation, coming from the committee of the whole, will go to the March twenty-second full council meeting, at which time, and it's proposed that this be adopted as our budget for the twenty-twenty-one year. And again, I would like to echo the comments made by the mover and seconder for the, my compliments to the work that our staff have done. And I know that is not, as much as we're focusing on the deputy treasurer today, and he has done tremendous work on this. It is all our staff, all our senior managers, from our C O, right on down, and they have all worked very hard to improve this budget and be responsive to council's requirements for it. So I thank you all for that. With that, if there are no further comments, in general or in specific, deputy, go ahead.
I would just, excuse me, I was just gonna ask if, when the vote comes, if we could stop sharing the screen, just so everyone was on the screen.
Absolutely. And council's comfortable with the recommendation before us, I'll ask the deputy treasurer to stop sharing the screen. And at this time, I will call the vote. And all those in favor of the recommendation proposed, I'd ask you to show a hand. Two, three, more. Motion is carried. Thank you very much. That brings us to the end of our agenda. Must there further, oh, the deputy clerk, or sorry, the clerk?
Yeah, so just for clarification, Your Worship, so the going on the March twenty-second agenda will be the minutes from this meeting, where they will be, are there to be ratified as well from the last meeting, the report with the bylaw will be on there as amended from tonight's, with the intent to adopt the bylaw as amended.
Thank you for that clarity. If there's anything else, then I'll call for a motion to adjourn. And I'll go to Council Parks, seconded by Council Townend. And any comment? I'll call the vote. All those in favor, please raise a hand. Any opposed? Motion is carried. We are adjourned. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen.